Good evening. Today is Monday, April 25th, 2022, and this is the meeting of the Planning Commission for the City of Fairfax. This evening first is Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Before we get started this evening, one housekeeping item for admission of Ms. Lockard to participate remotely. Mr. Feather.
Mr. Chair, I move that in accordance with the Planning Commission adopted policy that is permitted by Code of Virginia, Section 2.2-3708.2, to approve the request from Planning Commissioner Kirsten Lockard, properly submitted in writing prior to tonight's meeting, for remote participation, subject to the requirements outlined in the Planning Commission adopted policy and applicable in all or portions of the Planning Commission meeting of April 25, 2022.
Motion by Mr. Feather.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cunningham. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and it passes unanimously. We will move on to item number two, which is discussion and adoption of the agenda. Any discussion of the agenda this evening? Mr. Cunningham.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt the agenda as presented.
Motion by Mr. Cunningham.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rice. All those in favor of adoption of the agenda, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? And it also passes seven to zero. Next is presentations by the public on any matter not calling for a public hearing. I do have a question about this. I don't see the phone number. If somebody could just remind me of it, in case somebody who's participating... Are we still doing that, Mr. Napti?
We are no longer doing it.
Okay. Very good. We don't need the phone number then. And would anybody in council chambers this evening like to address the Planning Commission on any matter not calling for a public hearing under Agenda Item Number Three? Okay, seeing none, we'll move on to item number four, which is consideration of the March 28, 2022, meeting minutes. Any discussion of the meeting minutes by the commissioners from March the 28th? Okay, seeing none. Mr. Feather.
Mr. Chair, I move we adopt the minutes of the March 28, 2022, meeting of the Planning Commission as issued.
Okay, motion by Mr. Feather. Do I have a second, please?
Second.
Second by Mr. Coleman. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any abstentions? And it also passes seven to zero. Next is items, excuse me, number five, items not requiring a public hearing. This evening, Item A is consideration of an amendment to the Planning Commission remote participation policy to change the timeframe when notifications of remote participation are required. Very briefly, Mr. Napti.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Planning Commission. Just a reminder, the Planning Commission adopted your remote participation policy last fall, and as part of that policy, the requirement was that Planning Commissioners had to notify staff and the Chair at least a day before each meeting, even though state code allows notification up to the day of the meeting. And so, we requested that so that staff would have time to prepare for any remote participation. However, since that time, I think some situations have come up that have prevented Planning Commissioners from participating, and so the Planning Commission requested that we take another look at this. So, you'll see in your packet, staff has some revised language for the remote participation policy, allowing notification up to the day of the meeting. We still requested that notification be given by 5:00 p.m. for a 7:00 p.m. meeting, and that gives two hours for us to set up a go-to meeting or Zoom meeting, whatever it may be, and allow the TV production staff to prepare. And so, that is, again, that is voluntary, but that was just to assist with staff. So, that's all I have to explain that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Napti. Any questions from the commissioners or any comments about the proposed change to the remote participation policy? Mr. Rice.
Is two hours really enough to do all that?
We had that discussion today. It is enough. The one concern is from IT staff in that they would have to find someone to be present in the meetings, but we will work with them to find some alternative means if that can happen, so.
Just good to know what it takes to do that, you know, for the context of making that request.
I think practically speaking, if any of us plan to do that, or we feel like there's something happening the morning of our meeting, to obviously give the staff as much notice as possible. Obviously, the 5:00 is the time in the proposed policy, but if we can do it as early as possible, obviously, that would be helpful to the staff. So, any other questions or comments about that? Ms. Lockard, any questions or comments?
No, thank you.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Okay, seeing none, I'll ask for a motion on that. Mr. Feather.
Mr. Chair, I move that the Planning Commission adopt the revised Planning Commission remote participation policy as provided in Attachment 1 of the Staff Memorandum dated April 25, 2022.
Okay, motion by Mr. Feather. Do I have a second, please? Second by Mr. F. Takari. All those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed? And it also passes seven to zero. Thank you, Mr. Napti, for that. We'll move on to Item Six, which is public hearings. None this evening. We'll adjourn the regular meeting under Item Number Seven and move to Number Eight, which is the Work Session. Item A is a pre-application briefing for the Willowood Plaza Residential Development, and it is a project briefing on the preliminary proposal by Capital City Real Estate, potential developer, for the development of property located at 10300 Eaton Place and 10306 Eaton Place, more particularly described as Tax Map 47-4-02-02-001 and Tax Map 47-4-02-02-002. The conceptual plan proposes to replace existing surface parking at Willowood Plaza with 282 units in a seven-story multifamily building, approximately 2,100 square feet of retail space, and a parking garage in Phase One, 10306 Eaton Place, and 64 2-over-2 multifamily units with 128 parking spaces and a parking garage with 375 spaces to serve the existing office, which is at 10300 Eaton Place in Phase Two. That was a mouthful. Thank you very much, Mr. Frederick. When you're ready, we're ready for the presentation.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman Angers and members of Planning Commission. Again, this is a pre-application briefing on the potential development proposal for the Willowood Plaza Office Center. This is a first step in the current land use review procedure intended to advise Planning Commission and City Council of interest in developing a property in the city. As a quick overview, this differs from a work session in that no land use applications have been filed. The submission materials are not especially detailed, and this presentation will be relatively brief and primarily for informational purposes. The potential applicant is not participating in the meeting tonight. At this point, the potential applicant has met with staff and received very high-level feedback, which I will go over later in the presentation. The subject property is located at the intersection of Eaton Place and Fairfax Boulevard. The Willowood Plaza Office Center is six parcels, and four have been improved with commercial office buildings and parking lots. The parcels in the Willowood Plaza Office are owned by multiple owners, and Lots One and Two are proposed to be split, creating Lot Five and Six. I'll show those lots here in a minute. The potential applicant, Capital City Real Estate, proposes to redevelop the newly proposed Lot Five and Six. The overall acreage for Willowood Office Plaza is approximately 22.8 acres. That's the entire site that's outlined in black on your screen, and what's in your packet discusses the parcels that are outlined in yellow, and that acreage is roughly 15.2 acres, so not quite 16 acres. So, just so you're aware, the briefings discuss 15 acres, and it did not include Parcel A and Parcel B, so I just wanted to draw your attention that the overall parcel size or the acreage for the entire complex is roughly 22.8 acres. The existing five-story office buildings would remain, so on your screen, you'll see four office buildings, so those office buildings would remain. This is simply a redevelopment of Lots One and Two, looking to develop the parking lot areas for Lots One and Two. The current zoning for the subject property is commercial retail, and the comprehensive plan designation for the subject property is Activity Center. The subject property is located within the North Vax Small Area Plan. The North Vax Small Area Plan is envisioned to be a delicate balance between development activity and protecting the environment, as the plan promotes four key ideas to achieve that balance. One, a new linear park that connects the community with the Oquettine Creek watershed and nature by creating new public open spaces for outdoor activities, including plazas and green spaces, and envisions a new retail center with restaurants and other gathering spaces along those open spaces and the retail frontage. It also looks to transform existing superblocks into connected streets and providing the block grid, and it also provides a mix of housing typologies that are not well represented in Fairfax, such as senior living, market-ready apartments, condominiums, and affordable housing. The Small Area Plan provides a recommended retail locations. So, on your map, you see those areas provided in red with retail on both sides of Orchard Street, retail near Point 50, which is in this location here, University Drive Extension, and along the Linear Park. So, a zoom-in of the Linear Park proposed for the Small Area Plan. So, the Linear Park is designed, is a design feature in the North Vax Vision Plan as a new linear park that spans from North Vax West to North Vax East and connects north with the Oquettine Creek. The Linear Park serves as a public open space, a connector of neighborhoods, and a green infrastructure for stormwater capture. And finally, the main intent of the Linear Park is to connect all of Fairfax, all of North Vax's community with nature. The concept plan before you shows the subdivision plan to create two new lots by splitting Lots One and Two. So, Lot Five is proposed to be 2.9 acres, and Lot Six is proposed as 2.1 acres. Here is a side-by-side comparison of the North Vax Small Area Plan and the proposed Willowood Residential Concept Plan. The Small Area Plan supports residential, ground-floor retail, and parking, and a parking garage on the subject property. The maximum height of seven stories in the Small Area Plan supports connection to the Linear Park and a proposed trail to the north. So, on the left side of the screen, looking at Lot Five. Lot Five is proposed to be developed with 282 multifamily units, 2,100 square feet of ground-floor retail, and a structured garage with 644 parking spaces. The proposed density for Lot Five is approximately 96 units an acre with a proposed building height of approximately 74 feet and seven stories. Lot Five is proposed as 2.92 acres with road frontage and access to Eaton Place. Looking at Lot Six, Lot Six is proposed as 64 multifamily units, 2-over-2 units with two parking spaces per unit for a total of 128 spaces, and structured parking with 375 spaces. The proposed density for Lot Six is roughly 30 units an acre with a building height of approximately 44 feet and four stories. The structured parking that's planned for this lot is approximately 54 feet and five stories to serve the existing offices located at 10300 Eaton Place. Also, that's Lot One. So, Lot Six is proposed as 2.12 acres with road frontage and access to Eaton via an internal private street. The proposal shows an increase in green area would be added through redevelopment of the site, and it also provides interconnection with the existing Willowood Office Center for those four office buildings that would remain. So, the residential and the non-residential would have access, interparcel connectivity. In terms of the potential land use requests for this proposal, staff has identified a preliminary list of potential uses, land use applications that would need to be filed by the potential applicant. The list is subject to change with a formal submission by the applicant and more detailed review by staff. It is noted that as anywhere else in the city, there are by right options for development of the site, and that this list relates to the particulars of the proposed, the proposal that has been submitted. So, first observation is that a rezoning from CR to commercial, urban, or another district in the Architectural Control Relay District would be required. A special use permit for multifamily and/or upper-story mixed use would also be required. Special exceptions for zoning standards such as density, height, build-to-line, and frontyard setbacks, and other items that may be identified at a future date once we've received a formal submission. So, the applicant would be required to submit a major certificate of appropriateness for architecture and landscaping, and the applicant would also be required to provide a request for off-site and shared parking request to the zoning administrator. So, the applicant has indicated that there would be a desire for some off-site parking and shared parking based on the proposed plans that we have received. So, and some preliminary feedback, staff has met with the applicant as part of the pre-application process to provide high-level feedback from various city departments, which was included in the briefing report, and I'll quickly summarize the preliminary feedback that we've provided to the proposed applicant. So, we have had discussions based on the comprehensive plan and Small Area Plan, and that consistency would be, would be a requirement in terms of the proposal and how it would meet the Small Area Plan. The applicant has provided in retail along the tree-lined street that's shown in the plan. So, the plan actually shows, if I can go back to the retail page, on the site, the plan shows a small 2,100-square-foot area for commercial retail, while the Small Area Plan shows what would be a little more than 2,100 square feet in it, as the street, tree-lined street would have access to retail development. So, the applicant has provided some retail space on site in attempts to meeting the concept and for the small area plan. The applicant has also, would also need to make sure that all lots would be able to stand in the zone and meet the zoning ordinance requirements, the subdivision ordinance, and the Public Facilities Manual for the six lots within the subdivision. So, each lot would be required to meet those standards. The applicant has started a preliminary discussion with the zoning staff to ensure that they're in compliance with the zoning ordinance going forward. So, they've actually reached out to the zoning and had some discussions about the subdivision process and what's going to be required for each parcel as far as the development activity, based on the proposal that they've submitted. The subject property is subject to the Affordable Dwelling Unit Ordinance. The applicant would be required to provide 6% of the units on site for affordable housing. The, so, we're looking at roughly 21 units for Phase One and Phase Two. The multifamily section would, at a minimum, would be required 17 units, and in the Phase Two of the proposal, it would be required four units for the, for the 2-over-2 portion of the project. The applicant would be required to submit a transportation impact study and provide transportation demand management improvements with the plan. The transportation division addressed the connectivity that's consistent with the Small Area Plan, and that these connection points would need to line up with the existing road network that's currently in place. In terms of fire and building review, the applicant would be required to provide a truck turning movement using Ladder Truck 403 from all directions to demonstrate how a fire vehicle's emergency services would be able to traverse through the site and set up in case of an emergency operation. Fire hydrants would need to be located within 100 feet of all FTCs and provide fire lanes with designated signage and curb spacing and striping. In terms of turnarounds for fire apparatus, any dead-end lanes would, in excess of 150 feet, must provide an apparatus, an approved turnaround location for a fire apparatus. And finally, stormwater management for the subject property. Staff has spoken to the applicant in terms of the stormwater facilities that run through the site and that are under the proposed 2-over-2 section of the proposal. So, the details would have to be worked through if a plan were, would be submitted for Phase Two. Phase Two, there's some stormwater improvement areas that are in the locations of the 2-over-2 section. The next phase for the proposal would be a City Council briefing on May 24. And I'll stand by for any questions that you may have. And again, the applicant is not available for this discussion, and I'll try to answer any questions you may have.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Frederick. I think you guys know, right? These are questions and comments from the staff. The applicant's not here. Who would like to begin? Any comments or questions so far? Mr. Feather.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'd like to clarify some terms, first of all, because it may affect some other questions. The developer's proposal refers to the residences kind of on the southeast corner as 2-over-2 townhouses. The way I understand their definition of townhouses is they're standalone structures, one common wall. These are really condominium-type structures. They're really multifamily housing, not townhouses. Is that correct?
That's correct. My understanding is that it's multifamily, 2-over-2 is kind of what we've seen with the two projects, thinking of multi-projects.
That's right, yeah. Okay. I just want to make sure, because they use the term townhouses with 2-over-twos, and those are incongruous and not consistent with our definitions, okay? So, these are both multifamily housing proposals, which could be developed by right in the existing zoning district with a special use, as I read the zoning ordinance. Multifamily, by right, commercial.
It's a special use permit.
A special use, but by right, but otherwise, you don't have to rezone to do this, to do what they're proposing. So, what would be an advantage of rezoning to CU? Is there any that we know?
There's, in terms of just comparing the CR District versus the CU District, one of the advantages is the front setback requirement. In the CU, there's a smaller setback. In CR, the setback is minimum 20 feet, maximum 93 feet, and in the CU, it's 15 feet with no minimum setback. So, the range from the front setback is, would be a benefit for the applicant if they were, if they're looking at going to CU. And then, in terms of their other, there are some other, the building coverage maximum is 80% versus, in CU, versus CR, which is 60, and the lot coverage maximum is 100% versus M80 in CR. So, I think there are some, there's some benefits that the applicant is thinking of going to CU.
Looking out for potential future residents, that concerns me a little bit because we're losing, we lose the opportunity to have a little more green space. I already, it already seems to me there is no specific open space requirements, except for maybe lot coverage numbers in the CR, but at CU, it's 100%, it's permitted. If I were going to live in some kind of residence, I think I'd want a reasonable outdoor space to enjoy some outdoor space from where I live, and the, particularly the 2-over-2 arrangement, and I don't see anything that looks like what we might otherwise like to see in a, as we've considered in other kind of development. So, that's, that concerns me a little bit. So, what I'd rather see is do something that would enable more green space, require more green space for the residents, like a planned development district, perhaps. Other observation in the CU, and we brought this up at a previous meeting with previous proposal, is I don't see 75% non-residential uses on the ground floor of these multifamily buildings in the CU District. I believe that's a requirement, is it not?
For the, for the mixed use?
For the CU, with upper-story residential.
With upper-story mixed use, yes, it's 75%.
So, I guess that's probably the western piece where it's upper-story, the 2-over-twos are.
That's correct. The apartment building has retail on the bottom floor, but it's not.
And you did point out the, kind of the small amount of retail along what would be the Linear Park. They're just showing us very small space. They are showing an amenity space, too, which I guess is non-residential, but I don't think it approaches anywhere near 75%. So, that would be a concern. The Linear Park along that western boundary, there's a, that park is shown extending in the Small Area Plan. Was any of that, do we know, intended to be on this parcel, or would it have been on the parcel west of it? What are we expecting this applicant to provide some of the space for that Linear Park? Do we, do we know how? Well, that was delineated in the Small Area Plan.
It's my understanding, and Mr. Napti, correct me if I don't have the right understanding, that the road appears to be on the parcel for the application, for the potential applicant, and the Tree Line Park is off of the subject property.
Okay.
Mr. Feather, if I may, just very quickly, if you have some suggestions about that area, I think it would be helpful for the staff.
Well, I'd like to know if we expect the applicant to meet that particular requirement of the Small Area Plan, but if it's not on their property, then I'm not concerned.
I guess I, I guess I'm sort of just suggesting that this is a rendering. I don't know if things can move or not move. So, I just, you know, if there's some additional sort of input on that to perhaps get the applicant to think about it.
They've been, they've been notified, then.
Okay, very well.
That's my concern. Meeting, meeting some of the other requirements for the Small Area Plan. The Linear Park, because it butts, it's between these two properties, I don't know where it should sit, but we need to have a plan, and the, I guess it's showing as retail, but doesn't seem to meet the recommendation of the plan. And if I go to my other notes, I think we clarified that, that these are multifamily, they're not townhouses. Oh, the Small Area Plan envisioned a trail through the office complex to connect to the George Snyder Trail. I think it'd be good to see how that would be accommodated in this proposal. I think it'd be good to see how that would be accommodated in this proposal. I think that's all I have for the moment. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feather. Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, a few general observations, partly piggybacking on Mr. Feather on the western side and looking at the materials we were provided prior to this. And as on the Hickok Coal Concept Plan on the right-hand side, it shows just a gray line that runs diagonally across the proposed road back into the property. So I'm presuming that's, that's an area that would, yeah, that, that line is probably more than a hundred and fifty feet long. It goes back to the rather large parking lot in the rear. So I presume that you can get the fire truck to turn around in the rear under the current. But I guess my question is, is this road, if it's constructed, going to preclude construction of the road that, that was outlined, that would actually cross the property line at a bit of a diagonal and then provide at the back the grid structure that was going to bring it through the other properties in the future? In other words, there's, are we doing something now that would, that would preclude future steps? And that would be a question I would ask staff at this time to see what the implication would be for the future development of the adjacent parcels and see if there's an impact on the, on the overall implementation of the, the plan in the long run, so that we were just aware of that in moving forward and, and what the implication would be. I guess another question I have, since they own the entire parcel right now and they're breaking it up into a number of pieces, you have a massive parking lot in the back. Is the intention that that parking lot would stay a parking lot forever? Or is it possible, when they're done with breaking this up, that, that in future, something else could be done, since we're now going from two or four to six pieces of potential sublots? And, and how does that go forward with this application as they're moving it forward? I guess an additional question would be in parking in the two-over-two area. When we, when we talk about a hundred and twenty-eight parking spaces for the two-over-twos, that essentially is two spaces per unit. Would those be parked, as with the other developments, in tandem on both sides? So you would have four cars on the first floor under the residential units, meaning that that would be self-sufficient for the two-over-twos? And the three hundred and seventy-five parking spaces in the garage would be available then for the rest of the office complex? Or would a portion of the, of the garage parking be dedicated to the parking for the residential units on that side? And again, I guess on the west side, where you were talking about, what, six hundred and ninety-five parking spaces in the parking garage, I presume that's joint use for the number of apartment units that are there, but also to help offset some of the parking that would be lost currently, that is used to, to support the floor space and the, and the number of units in the commercial buildings that will remain. Do those things tie together? Those, I guess, are my principal questions. I think Mr. Feather had some good points. The five thousand, I think, what was it, five thousand feet of commercial space? No, twenty-one hundred square feet of retail space in the corner, I guess, is interesting. It would be interesting to see if that could be made larger in accordance with the other recommendations. But those would be the things I would be looking at. Aside from that, it looks like it is, it is attempting to conform to what was put out in the Northfax Plan. So largely, it is not an unexpected use that's coming forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feather. Additional comments or questions? Mr. Rice.
In the, in the small area plan, the center of Willowood Plaza has kind of a green space, I think Mr. Feather referred to. I think my understanding was always that that would provide a, at least, a pedestrian connection to a planned trail system that would be on the north side, George Snyder Trail, et cetera. Although Mr. Feather may have asked, is, are you aware of any intention here in the concept plan to preserve that as a walking corridor and connection through to the trail? It looks as though the buildings would preclude that from happening.
So are you referring to this area here? Or can you see my?
Yes. And so that small area plan has that as a kind of connector through the site to the trails on the north side. The concept plan makes that impossible.
The, my understanding, based on the information we received, is that the office buildings would remain and the, that area would, would remain as well. They don't plan on changing any of that, any of that.
The requirement for a turnaround only applies to streets that dead end, is that correct? Are there any other circumstances where the fire department says we need turnaround space that you could imagine on the west side that my colleagues refer to?
I don't want to speak for the fire marshal, you know, as, as he provided comments that are, that are in the packet. You know, one of the comments, basically, if I can, I think that's what he was addressing as far as making sure that there's adequate turnaround space. So if you look at page three of the, of the report, it comments says the fire lanes running parallel with the western and eastern sides of the apartment building, and new parking deck, deck must be at least twenty-six feet wide due to the close proximity to the multi-story buildings and the need to properly position aerial apparatuses. The eastern lane will serve both new and existing buildings. And then he made a comment referring to having a hundred and fifty feet lanes that are, you know, any, any dead-end lane in excess of a hundred and fifty feet must be provided with an approved turnaround for, for an apparatus. So he was trying to get it to make sure that there, there were circulation around the existing buildings and the proposed residential building with the parking structures. So he, and I, I think he's trying to address what's, what's existing and what's proposed, making sure that there's, the fire trucks are able to get around. And at the minimum width has to be at least twenty-six feet. So, and then any streets that are longer than a hundred and fifty feet must have a turnaround spot. So I think his comments are directed at that.
So again, referring to the comments of my colleagues in the area in the small area plan, this marked linear park and retail main street, and then new community green over there on the west side off their parcel, that they may do something that will require turnarounds or extra space that may prevent that space from being used as it was intended. And that's certainly, although most of this does look to conform to the small area plans, that would potentially be an issue. The main attraction, I think, amongst the public for the small area plan was the green space running along Orchard and running through this property. And so if, if that in any way was compromised or lost, I think that it would be, it would be really a significant problem, given that appeared to me, it's, as I participated in those, those small area plan meetings, that the support for the public green space in those corridors in the middle was, you know, a paramount issue in the small area plan. And certainly, we want to do whatever we can to make sure that, that that doesn't change or that they, given the fact that their setbacks may not be as generous as needed, that we make sure that that area is not compromised.
Understood. I think those, those types of details that we would, we would need to pay attention to once an application came in.
Okay, that's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. Before I forget, Ms. Lockhart, any comments or questions?
Sure, just a brief comment slash question, kind of summarizing what I've heard so far from my fellow council members. What I feel is missing from this plan perhaps is sort of attention to the transitions between each of these lots and then, you know, to the west, the remainder of the small area parcel. It just feels very built to the line. And I think that, you know, to get consensus on the small area plans, the Northfax in particular, there was a desire to do a little bit better than that in terms of space planning. So not that there's anything, you know, as others pointed out, that's, that's awry with this proposal, but I don't see personally how it transitions from residential to office space to, to retail in a way that is attractive to potential tenants. So that would be my concern.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Lockhart. Mr. Fattigari.
Just a few comments, just to follow up on my fellow council member's comments. So twenty-one hundred square feet, so, you know, in our small area plan, it says, "Northfax is envisioned to be a place of forward-thinking experimentation with a focus on a new retail center, transforming existing super block into connected streets and a block grid." And kind of to what Ms. Lockhart said here, this seems like it's a little bit isolated, these two divisions. So I think we need to figure out a way to incorporate a better kind of retail plan onto that linear street, on that linear park street. Because twenty-one hundred square feet, I can envision like another vape store and nail salon plugged right in there because of such little space. And that's not the kind of the plan that we're, we're envisioning here. Second point is that, I guess, I'm keen to see the traffic study, because if any of folks here have seen the traffic on Eaton heading into Fairfax during rush hour, it's a complete disaster, even on Saturday mornings. So I would be interested to see how traffic flow would be implemented there, especially coming out of, what is that? What is that, Lot Six? In terms of, you know, when we're talking about almost a thousand parking spots here, so parking spots, so envisioning that every unit will be fulfilled, that's a lot of cars that's going to be pouring out into Eaton in the morning and coming home in the afternoon. So I'd be keen to see how that plays along into, into the plan here, especially since we're trying to create an area that, you know, having made, most of the traffic on Fairfax connecting with the Chain Bridge, but I can tell you, a lot of folks are going to be coming into that street as they do now. So just, just a few comments.
Thank you, Mr. Fattigari. Mr. Coleman?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Not being a part of the initial Northfax process, this is kind of, it's somewhat new, but I've looked over it before. I think it kind of fits generally with the, as it's been said before, what's to be expected. Mr. Fattigari did bring up a point that I was kind of thinking of too, is I've been on Eaton Place in the afternoon and the morning, Monday through Sunday, and it can be miserable. It can take you fifteen minutes to go that little quarter-mile stretch, sometimes it feels like it. So I'd be curious about that. Pedestrian, how they envision that, that's also been brought up, how to get from Willowood Plaza to that South Point, especially now that, that Compass Coffee's open. I imagine a lot of those residents would want to cross Eaton Place. So how is that kind of envisioned with their safety in mind? Also, that back parking structure, is that really what, do they plan to keep it there? That's also been brought up. That was one of my questions. And I think that's about it. One comment that I'll make, in any two-over-two community I've ever been in, there's never enough parking because they have that one garage spot, they have the one surface spot. Ninety percent of the time, people are using the garage for everything but their car. So I would imagine that, that structure that they are going to put next to it will probably need some resident guest parking accommodation in addition to the office employees. Otherwise, I think that's about it right now.
Thank you, Mr. Coleman. All good, good comments so far. I have a number as well. The first is to follow up on something that Mr. Feather said, which I thought was a good observation, on the rezoning. Something that I also sort of looked at was potential open space. Now, the CU doesn't have that requirement. So, and I know you mentioned this in your staff report, Mr. Frederick, you know, I don't know the, I don't know whether it's possible to do plan district or not. You know, maybe that's something that the applicant should consider, but just to raise that because of the requirements in the plan district. Another is quickly on parking, because a number of people have brought it up already. Is it, is the proposal overparked, or is that the actual numbers required by the zoning ordinance?
In terms of the two-over-twos.
In terms of, let's start with the two-over-twos and then also the other parcel, correct?
So the two-over-twos, that's the, that's the requirement, basically, two spaces per, per unit. The, the multifamily building, I don't have the breakdown of number of uni, or the breakdown of type of units. So it was, it's hard to actually determine at this point if it's overparked or not, because you could have, you know, three-bedroom, two, or, you know, they could have some studio, it depends on the mix. So, you know, it's kind of hard to determine right now. It's all concept, but, you know, it's something that we would evaluate going forward to make sure that it's not overparked. But I think that what they've essentially are trying, what they were essentially trying to do is, is to make sure that they have enough parking for the residential components and also take care of the office space, the existing office parking requirements. So that's why you see two parking decks basically proposed on Lot Five and one on Lot Six. So they're trying to provide, provide enough parking.
So the ordinance, though, will, will also be applicable to the, to the additional, I wouldn't say additional, but the replacement office parking?
Yes, they're gonna, yes, they would need to account for all the proposed uses. So if they're taking away from the, the two buildings up front, which are a part of the, the request tonight, or the potential application tonight, they need to make sure that they meet those parking requirements going forward. Since they're taking away those parking spaces, they have to provide parking for those.
I, I, I'm actually not concerned whether or not they replace them all. I know the zoning ordinance requires that. I do accept Mr. Coleman's comment that there may need to be some of that parking in that structure, perhaps next to the two-over-twos, that is given to that area for guest parking or however it's used. But I would say that, at least personally speaking, I'm not in favor of overparking it, and I don't see it as a virtue or anything that's sort of positive about an application. I don't know if they intend to do that, but I have heard that as sort of points of persuasion in other applications. So that's just my take on, on that part, and that's why I asked the question. Certainly, if the zoning ordinance requires that certain number, then I guess that's what we can do. But if it's more, my sort of suggestion would be to not do that.
Not do that. And I'm just, also want to mention real quickly that the potential applicant has expressed interest in, you know, off-site parking and also shared parking. So I think there could be a combination of requests with the zoning administrator in terms of providing some shared parking on-site. So they've, you know, they're considering shared parking and also off-site parking in terms of, you know, short-term for the off-site and then shared, shared parking on, on-site with the, with the two structures that are there, so.
Okay.
That they're proposing. So they're thinking about parking and, you know, how much is, is going to be needed.
That's fine.
One more question?
Yeah, Ms. Lockhart, sure.
Questions, thank you. So another potential applicant for a different site, other side of the city, has already expressed an intent to provide their residential tenants with shuttles to public transportation. Do we know of anything like that for this particular proposal?
At this point, staff has, has talked to the applicant about doing the transportation demand management program and taken a look at those, those options. So it's something that... So it's something that, um, staff has put on the radar for the applicant if the application comes forward. So those are the kind of details that we would, uh, we would want to work out, um, through the land use application process.
Gotcha, yeah. So I think that would be very much in keeping with, again, the goals of the small area plan.
Thank you, Ms. Lockhart. Uh, quickly, Mr. Mr. Cunningham, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh, this is one proposal in this area, what I'm going to refer to as a general question for staff at this time. Uh, and that's that several years ago, when we were looking at what were called the nodes and we were looking at residential development in the city, we came up with a number which I believe was thirty-two hundred or that and said we were in essence going to put about eight hundred residential units in each of five nodes. And when we look at that going forward and look at North Facts, we're talking about three hundred and forty-six residential units in this proposal. We have on the west side of North Facts already approved a number of townhouses and a multifamily residential unit. When I look at the rest of the North Facts plan and look at future development and the remaining buildings that are in that area, uh, for potential development, where do we sit in the long run on looking at residential density that we're heading for? And I'll ask that question not only in regard to this, this development, but North Facts and in light of the fact that we're heading into the five-year comp plan review and it's likely to be one of the subjects we're moving forward on. So when I look at the remaining development to be done here, as well as the other nodes, and I asked that question when we just looked at Camp Washington in our work session, where where are we headed for residential infill into these areas? Because that seems to be the construction du jour at this point, and it is all multifamily, be it apartment, or townhouse, or two-over-two, or condominium. It's all dense residential development that we're dealing with in the last couple of years. And it seems that that's what we'll be looking at going forward. So I would appreciate it if we could look in and in addition to dealing with the individual projects, also look at the entire area and forecast where it's going.
Mr. Napti.
If you'll note, in the, um, North Facts Small Area Plan on page thirty-seven, there is a a long-term anticipation of fourteen hundred residential units within the study area. And that's based more on our consultant's market analysis of what they think could happen in the next fifteen years. And at that point, we we think that we would look at the plan, see what has happened, how much construction has actually happened, see if we need to revisit the plan if we're moving in a different direction, and we can certainly adjust that number up and down. Um, so that's likely to change. Um, so I I would also point out, though, when we look at development of the rest of the activity center, although residential seems to be the only thing that's in demand right now. Again, we are looking at a very long term for all of the other properties to develop. So over time, we might see a few other residential proposals in this area. But as we start looking at, you know, beyond ten years, the market becomes much more difficult to predict. And at that time, we could start to see some other uses become more in demand. We don't know for sure. But, um, we we certainly don't look at this plan and and the the numbers on the side of this page, uh, on this summary sheet, explain that as well. We don't look at this plan and expect that every new building will be residential multifamily. Um, we we hope that we will be able to attract some other types of uses here as well.
I would imagine Amazon Fresh is smiling like crazy right now, building a tremendous client base that's very much within walking distance. So, yes, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Um, I'm just going to finish off with some additional comments. Another to Mr. Feather's point on, I'm looking at page seven of the Smaria Plan, uh, item two, which is in the map key, the new community green. And I raised this point to staff previously. I I realize that the the rendering so far show, um, sort of that to be to the west of the property line. I would encourage the applicant or potential applicant to consider perhaps being involved in starting that. I don't know exactly how that would look, but I think that the staff should, um, speak with the applicant about that. I also, I also think that that retail requirement by the plan along the future Orchard Street there should also be examined further, uh, rather than just having that, uh, corner on the southwest side. Let's see, some additional comments. That is pretty pervasive, that retail frontage. Um, that's on page twelve. That's a main focus point. Next to that, potential large open space in the future. That's something I think that the applicant should also address, or should be prepared to address if it's not possible. Uh, the trail connection also to George Snyder. I don't know, frankly, admittedly, I have not kept up with whether or not, how the George Snyder Trail is progressing. I know the staff knows this, but there have been suggestions of connections to it from this area. That also should be addressed by the applicant, I do believe, unless I'm missing something. Have they addressed that, Mr. Frederick?
They are, let's see if I can. So on their concept plan, if let me see if I can get to the one that's, you can see it a little bit better. You know, we've had discussions that, um, that they would be, um, would, we would, um, would like for them to make connections. And I think they're planning on making a connection, but I don't know that it's necessarily shown on this level. But they're aware of that, you know, the connections and the trail runs pretty close to the property line, that as it's proposed. So, um, you know, the applicant, the potential applicant is is aware of, uh, of that future connection point.
Okay, that, thank you for addressing that. Um, also on page twenty-two, um, and a number of commissioners have alluded to this already. You know, the the plan does show a seven-story height maximum there. So this is generally in conformance with that suggestion, even if it is not in conformance with the zoning ordinance or potential zoning, um, or the current zoning ordinance, I should say. And one last thing, and Ms. Lockhart raised a point that I was going to raise, but also one of the things is on page twenty-five, it's on the right column, um, and it's mostly about transportation. You know, providing incentives to developers, encouraging active modes of transportation in those areas. I think that that's particularly important to start sort of the infrastructure improvements that are necessary so that when North Facts is done, when I'm seventy-three years old probably, um, that it does have those things in place. So those things, I think, are important to think about and to ask the applicant about. Those are my general comments, all coming directly from the Small Area Plan, um, which was helpful certainly in thinking about this potential application. Any additional comments from the commissioners on this? Mr. Rice?
Well, I, I think that it's really, uh, to the benefit of all the applicants to build as much planning for transportation connections and these sorts of things that my colleague mentioned. It's, um, you know, walkable and, uh, areas and areas that are easy to, you know, use mass transit to get to the metro station. Those areas command higher prices. So this is a, uh, you know, economic consideration for the applicant. I really, I say this, I think, every meeting, but I think the city needs to think not just about current transportation needs, but needs to be like ten years out and thinking about what we need to ask in proposals like this to facilitate the sorts of unique transportation, things that are going to be coming our way. And if we don't ask applicants to, uh, respect that and the, some of the details that our chair has just read from the Small Area Plan, we're going to be, you know, fighting, uh, in the future just to, just to maintain, uh, a suboptimal kind of status quo. And so I think these initial developments in these areas, whether it's, uh, you know, Camp Washington or North Facts, we need just to make sure that the projects that are coming in at the start really, uh, are consistent with all the issues that we talked through with the community back when we made the plans. And certainly, a big part of that's, uh, connections through the green space and the trails, connections to mass transit. And I really think we need to insist that those things be incorporated. And it's, it's not, uh, to the detriment, it's to the benefit, economically, for anybody that comes in. Because that's going to make these areas, long-term, the most, uh, attractive places to live. And it's going to help those developers recoup the costs and more. So, um, that's it.
Thank you, Mr. Rice. I'll just, one last point, and I intend to belabor it because I do think it's important. You know, this is, there's, there's only so much the applicant can do. They can do some things. And I'll just say this sort of like, very matter-of-factly, it's more than just ten-foot sidewalks. You know, the requirements for changes, Eaton Place is sort of pretty inhospitable, um, for pedestrians. And so if you're going to put a number of them there, um, and this is probably outside the scope of the Planning Department, but certainly changes to, you know, road design and other issues over there should be sort of thought about concurrently when we're thinking about for future capital improvements. So that's sort of my last take. Uh, any additional comments before we move on? Okay, Mr. Cunningham.
Thank you. I guess the observation I have and Mr. Napti for pointing to fourteen hundred units, as mentioned in here, I'm going to say that's about twenty-five hundred people, uh, in fourteen hundred units. And twenty-five hundred people is about ten percent of the city's population that in the next fifteen years we're going to be put in, in the North Facts area. Ten percent increase in the city's population in this small area. So I think that underscores the need for transportation and, uh, neighbor-friendly and calming, uh, for the major road networks to go through it, as an indication as to why all of this is so important and why it should be looked at in a holistic point or context in these things as well as the individual small properties being redeveloped without a sense of context. I think we saw that on, uh, Oak Street when we began to talk about Mount Vineyard and the Breezeway and Paul VI and the American Legion, and we started to add up the total number of units we were putting on this quarter-mile-long stretch of road. Each one was an individual project, but nobody said we were going from, essentially, two hundred housing units to six hundred housing units in this small area without even considering what the road could take, uh, since it's an old road with small ditches that weren't even being addressed on one side for half of it. So when those things come out in context as opposed to individual projects, people suddenly say, wow, that's not what I intended. And that's why I think we need to to keep the big picture in mind, along with each one of the small components that goes into it. So I think this is essentially a good project moving forward, but I think it needs to be done in context with all the other things that that are going to be impacted by it.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Um, any comments from the staff before we move on? All right, thank you very much. Uh, thank you, the commissioners, for those comments tonight. We'll close that and move on to item B in the work session, which is a discussion of draft amendments to a number of sections of the zoning ordinance, floodplain regulations, decision-making bodies, summary of review authority, floodplain permits, special exceptions and variances. Ms. Coleman, right? I don't think, I've seen you here as long as I've been on the Planning Commission.
Oh, Ms. Coleman. Ms. Coleman was a young lady when we started working here. And it's not the job that's done unto her, it's just that she's done us so well for so long.
Well, it's nice to have you here. It's nice to meet you in person. Um, I've heard you on the, um, speaker a number of times, so it's nice to see you. Um, and you'll be doing the presentation this evening on this item.
Actually, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to give a few opening comments
Sure.
just to kind of walk you through what we have intended for you tonight.
Sure.
And thank you for the introduction. Um, so I am here and it is a pleasure to be before the Planning Commission this evening. Um, and what I'd like to do is, uh, just give you a little bit of a roadmap to the presentation. So in your, in your, um, meeting materials, you did receive the staff memo as well as three attachments. And so attachment A is the clean copy of the revisions that we're proposing to the city zoning, uh, sorry, cities, uh, floodplain regulations. Attachment B was a simplified annotation to just sort of help you pull the thread, if you will, to other sections of the zoning ordinance that will be affected by what we're proposing in the floodplain regulations. And those changes are really more of a housekeeping. I know it doesn't seem that way, but, uh, what we found is that the floodplain regulations had been most recently adopted in twenty-fourteen under our previous zoning ordinance. Twenty-sixteen, we radically changed the zoning ordinance and changed its structure and its content. And the floodplain regulations were never really, uh, put into that same context. So this is an opportunity because of our requirements to update the regulations with the additional, uh, with the new mapping that's being prepared by FEMA. Uh, it gave us an opportunity to go back and, um, make these corrections to the floodplain regulations. So that's what's in the annotated version. And then, of course, for anyone who's a very, anyone who's an enthusiast about floodplain regulation, we gave you attachment C, which is the detailed markup copy. And that detailed copy, markup copy was created for us by the consultant that is assisting staff with this effort to rewrite the regulations. And that's AECOM Technical Services, represented tonight by Ms. Christine Estes. And Christine is going to provide you with the actual, uh, presentation of the changes to the regulations and with some additional background information on that as well. And so at that point, we're happy to entertain any questions. Um, we can certainly use the annotated version, if you like, to be the foundation of any questions you may have. But you're also welcome to contact me or, um, Brooke Harden and our director, uh, with any questions you may have about the regulations after tonight. The process that we're embarking on is that, uh, we did present these regulations, the proposed changes to the Environmental Sustainability Committee just last Wednesday. And so we're here before you tonight, and our schedule will take us to the City Council Work Session on June fourteenth. We also have, uh, shared our proposed amendments with the Department of Conservation and Recreation, which is the state agency that gives oversight to the floodplain regulations and floodplain management for Region Three, for FEMA's Region Three. So, um, we have received some comments from them, and those adjustments will need to be made. So the goal is to bring together any comments from the Planning Commission. So far, I haven't received any additional comments from the, from the Environmental Sustainability Committee. But also the City Council's work session comments, bring those all together and then come back to you with a public hearing where we can then step you through anything that changed significantly from what you're going to see tonight. So that's a little bit of a background on the process that we'll be going through, uh, from tonight forward. And so with that, I'll turn the presentation over to Christine. I'll try and.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Coleman.
You're welcome.
Ms. Estes, correct?
Yes.
Okay, it's nice to see you. Thank you for coming.
Thank you, Michelle. Um, yes, I'm Christine Estes. I'm with AECOM. I'm a civil engineer and project manager. Um, we've been helping the city update their floodplain ordinance. Let me go to presentation mode here. Let's see, there we go. The, um, floodplain regulations are included in section four fifteen of the zoning ordinance. As Michelle mentioned, they were last updated in twenty-fourteen. So the city has taken an effort to, um, make some changes. The city has received a preliminary new, um, flood insurance study as well as new maps. There should be, um, an actual revision to those preliminary maps that are going to be issued this Thursday. So just please note that as well. Uh, there won't be many major changes, um, to some of the mapping I'll show you in a moment, but just note that that will be coming out soon. Um, so, um, the city has updated these ordinances to adopt the new flood study. They will have to do that as as part of that process for with FEMA. They've also taken the opportunity to make some additional changes as well. As as Michelle mentioned, um, just a lot of it is cleanup and moving, um, parts of the text of the floodplain ordinance to other portions of the zoning ordinance. And really make some to other portions of the zoning ordinance and really make some clarifications as well. Also to match the current Virginia model ordinance that stated 2017, so newer than when the city last updated the ordinance. The city is also taking the opportunity to adopt some higher standards, higher than FEMA's minimum requirements. The city is planning to apply for FEMA's Community Rating System Program, CRS, which will allow residents and property owners within the city to get reduced floodplain insurance through FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program. The more higher standards that the city adopts, the bigger credit that FEMA does provide as well. So just some, some background, FEMA's National Flood Insurance Program is where they lay out what the requirements are for, for state and local floodplain programs. Adopting those minimum NFIP requirements allows the city to stay within the program and get, and get that federal flood insurance. And the intent of the floodplain regulations are mainly to protect life, health and property, but also to minimize public flood control expenditures, minimize rescue and relief efforts, minimize business interruptions and minimize damage to public facilities. So all good goals there. We have been working with the Department of Conservation and Recreation. As Michelle mentioned, Angela Davis is our contact. She has provided recently some comments on the draft floodplain ordinance that we, we are working to incorporate. Also wanted to note that the city's current floodplain management website does have a link to view the new FEMA floodplain maps. There is a link directly on that site that will go to FEMA's Map Changes Viewer. This is just a snapshot. You can put in any address in this Map Changes Viewer to see what the changes are in the flood maps. The, the blue here is showing no change in the special flood hazard area. The special flood hazard area is the boundary that's defined by the 1% annual chance storm event. The purple is actually showing a decrease in the floodplain and the yellow area is showing an increase. In general, there was more properties taken out of the floodplain than put in, but there are some new properties that were put into the floodplain as well. You can also, on this site, turn off layers within the, in the layer drop-down here. You can see just the preliminary mapping, just the current mapping. You can also see the changes to the 0.2% annual chance floodplain as well on this site. This is just a summary of the, the major revisions that have been made to the floodplain ordinance. I'll get into some more details in the next slides for these different components here. These sections of the code were moved from the floodplain ordinance to other parts of the code in order to really just streamline and make the zoning ordinance more consistent throughout. This is some detail on the changes to the floodplain administrator section that has now been taken out of the floodplain ordinance and moved into the zoning ordinance. The city's current zoning administrator is also the floodplain administrator for the city. This shows some details on the, the letter of map changes, that, some changes that are made in the ordinance here. As you can see, in the, the red text shows what the changes are. For public, public property and utilities, there will be a requirement to submit a conditional letter of map revision and a letter of map revision for any cumulative rise of one foot or more over the base flood elevation. And then any public property will be required to submit a letter of, conditional letter of map revision and then a letter of map revision for any change at all on the property or off-site as well. For this next one here, the establishment of special flood hazard districts, this is something that's in the, the model ordinance that, that has been added. And this is really designating uses within the 0.2%, or otherwise known as the 500-year floodplain. This is not a requirement. This is beyond the FEMA minimum standards. But obviously you don't want to build critical facilities within any sort of risky, risky area, even the 0.2% chance event.
I think we're having a screen sharing problem. Kristen is saying that she can't see the slide.
Let me see if I can, do we need to change the sharing here?
I think you might need to unshare and share it back.
Okay.
She's not seeing updated slides that you did over the Zoom call.
Let's see. Is that working now?
I can see it now, thank you.
Okay, great. So this, this change is recommended in the model ordinance, but also not required. So this next one here is just showing development standards that were changed. Some of the permit requirements and site plan permit applications were removed since they're already in portions of the zoning ordinance.
I apologize, Ms. Estes. Can I just ask a question? Because I'm not like hugely familiar with all of this. Can you just go back one slide? Did I hear you right? This is something that's discouraged but not prohibited?
No, it is encouraged.
It's encouraged not to do this? It's encouraged not to build for these particular uses, uses in the floodplain?
Correct, yes.
Correct, okay.
This, this section is encouraged by the model ordinance to discourage building in the 0.2% annual chance floodplain.
Okay, but it's not, it is discouraged, that type of development, but is it, will the zoning ordinance prohibit that type in the floodplain?
The new, the proposed, new proposed language will prohibit critical facilities in the 0.2% annual chance floodplain.
Okay, gotcha. Thank you. That was my question. Okay, thank you.
Sure. So this, this new one here on, this shows changes between allowed uses and the, the proposed changes here. Let's see. So the, the red text here is also showing changes as well. This next one is a higher standard as well in the elevation and construction standards. Previously, in, in the current floodplain regulations, it requires new, new construction or substantial improvement to be built 18 inches above the base flood elevation. In the new proposed ordinance, they're requiring two feet above the base flood elevation. So this is also a higher standard. For accessory structures, this is also something that's, was not in the current floodplain ordinance but is recommended in the state model ordinance to include a section on the use of accessory structures. So this has been added as well. We've also, the, the last bullet here, the city is requiring a signed declaration of land restriction or non-conversion agreement. This is something that is recommended in the model ordinance but not required. This is recommended mainly for if a property changes hands, you want to make sure that the new property owner is not making any of these accessory structures into livable space. For existing structures in the floodplain, this is another change that was made currently. The, any, any improvement for, for 50% or more of a property required to comply with the floodplain regulations. And the changes now changed that to 49%. So just a little bit stricter. And this is just, once again, a general summary of, of the sections that were moved. All of the sections on the current column are requirements in the Virginia State Model Ordinance. They're still existing in the zoning ordinance but have been moved out of the floodplain ordinance and are elsewhere now in the zoning ordinance. And as Michelle mentioned, the next steps here will be to obviously collect questions and, and comments that, that you all have, also incorporate DCR's comments, make those changes, present that to the city council as well at that June 14 meeting. So now I'll, I'll open it up to any questions and I may turn to Michelle for answers as well.
Okay, great. Thank you very much. Questions? Mr. Rice? How did I know that you had questions on this?
So there are residents locally that go through the process of making a request to FEMA to move their property out of the floodplain for purposes of avoiding requiring insurance payments. And so the, some of my students at the local university who have access to letter of map amendments and have done floodplain analysis note that some of the changes that the residents have received have been based on differences of, you know, just a few inches. And just a few inches in elevation for the lowest point on the exterior of the structure will allow them to have a fairly big swing financially in terms of the cost. What we're proposing is a much more conservative approach, which, you know, instead of, in, in local terms, instead of 18 inches, we're going to two feet. That sounds like not a big deal, but that's a big deal. And in terms of the land surface that that two feet covers, it's, it's not just a simple, you know, six inches, that's 25% of the allowable limit. It's, could be a vast area that's incorporated. And so do you have any graphics that show what that change in that elevation parameter would do in terms of the area covered in the city?
We, we have not developed any spatial extents to show what that impact would be. But once again, that regulation would only apply to, to new construction or substantially improved construction.
Right, right, right. Or changes that, you know, grading or something with development that would suddenly change the dynamics of the floodplain for people that already have structures close by. Is that correct?
Can you repeat that question?
Okay, so I'm, I'm trying to logically think through this in real time. So there could be some relatively modest changes in terms of grading and topography that would conceivably make some fairly large spatial impacts to that, you know, two-foot limit. Is that correct? Sorry, this is hypothetical and you shouldn't be asked to respond to something like that. I'm part of a Parks and Recreation Advisory Board that's discussing removing a levee that's along the river. And the conversation was just a very casual in nature, oh, we should move that and then we can, you know, enjoy the sorts of flood plain and nature and ecology that exists in areas that do routinely flood. And I, you know, just raised my hand a bit and said, I, I think there are some laws that are applicable to removing structures like levees that protect parks, cities' property yard in particular, close by to this park, that, you know, you don't do inadvisably. I guess my summary here is that, that a change in terms of what we allow that may look to be relatively modest could in fact have a very big impact spatially. And I think that would just be an important context behind changes. Is there a way, just to follow up here, is there a way to also very easily view all the letters of map amendment or revision that have been filed with FEMA? And is there a process that the city might use to display those so that residents know which one of their neighbors has appealed to be removed from the floodplain?
FEMA does have that information. I know that some of that information may be privacy-protected, the actual addresses for those, but...
So no, those are actually public records?
But you could show like a cluster where there's a lot of, of letters of map amendment, which could indicate something is wrong with the maps there.
Okay, just to clarify, letters of map amendment are public. So they are, I think Ms. Coleman might have a statement. Are they not public documents that?
I'll try and be helpful about that. So we, of course, as zoning administrator, the floodplain administrator is required to maintain records of all the CLOMARS and LOMARS that have been received from FEMA. And so those are in our records retention program and are available to anyone who would like to receive them. It wouldn't require anything special. As you say, it's public record and we can produce those. But I do believe that there is a more detailed information in the flood mapping that might be a little easier to understand. But, you know, we, we certainly can make those records available.
Well, it would be fantastic if those records could be available digitally as well, to have people actually be able to view within their subdivision, who's gone to the trouble to hire a professional surveyor to remove them from the floodplain. And like I said, my students that have written theses about this, they're dealing with just an inch or two. And if it's an inch or two and it's certified by a surveyor, you're, you swing in terms of what you end up paying and insurance can be fairly big.
It can, yes.
Anyway, having access to all the public information that isn't privacy-protected would be, would be great. And that's something I would strongly advocate at the same time that we're changing some other things. So I think that's all.
We can look into making that more accessible because now you come to the, come to the zoning office and we have a kiosk where you can access these records. But that requires a trip to the zoning office so you can get into our system in, in order to access the records.
Yes, and, and we have a GIS manager that's very capable and conceivably if there's, you know, an RSS feed or something that can extract those records automatically, it would be, it would be a great thing to be able to visualize for the residents. And certainly if we're making changes, it would help the context behind, you know, what's going on. And like I said, that very small changes can have big impacts. And it would be nice for people to be able to see, yeah, it's just an inch or two can swing thousands of dollars to and from a budget for a homeowner. So not that I advocate people removing themselves from the floodplain through what's perceived to be sort of a subjective, you know, shot for a surveyor that will come in and... Yeah, it, it's just, there's a little bit of cynicism, I think, in my voice about this whole process because, because it is, you know, essentially a very small difference that, you know, just by asking to be removed, you can be. And then, of course, the shared risk, you know, you're pulled out of that pool that you were contributing to prior. Anyway, I could go on for hours about this and I'm gonna...
Is, is the change that's proposed, in your view, not helpful?
No, it is helpful, but I just want to reiterate that a very minor change that we make can have a very large impact in terms of what would be allowed. And the change, you know, if you're looking just at the six inches, it sounds small. But it's not. It's actually really big in terms of the spatial effects, the geographic effects of making a change like that. Anyway, like I said, I can go off in a direction in this way for hours and I shouldn't do that.
And the changes that we're making are tending towards the higher standards of FEMA. So to go from 18 inches to, to a one-foot clearance is, is essentially more conservative and is making the adjustments less risky.
Okay, so is it harder to be removed from the floodplain under the current proposal?
So this is a, this is a policy that the city would adopt, not a FEMA-specific policy.
Right.
Right, right.
But it would be more, sorry, FEMA doesn't really control necessarily what we do, but we have local regulations that cite the FEMA policies and, anyway.
And what we're, what we're looking for is technical compliance. And while it is a local regulation, the CLOMARS and LOMARS are issued by FEMA. So when we receive a development proposal, the applicant is required to obtain the CLOMAR and the LOMAR directly from FEMA. The city is just advised that that application is being made. So we turn it over to, to FEMA for review and then they'll come back with, with their final decision.
Mr. Cunningham?
Thank you. I appreciate this. And having dealt with it for a long time, there are any number of examples that could be alluded to. But I guess my general question in this is, one, when we talk about going from 18 inches to two feet and providing additional safety, is there a cost implication to doing that for various things that are listed in here to the city and things along that line? I heard the name trails or saw the word trails listed in. I heard the name Trails or saw the word Trails listed in part of this change. And what comes to mind is the George Snyder Trail, which is yet to be constructed. And I'm sure that part of that goes through floodplain just because of where it's being put. Is, is that one of the things that would have a significant cost implication, trying to build a trail up so that it's high enough going through a floodplain area that, that would cause it potentially to be either delayed or, or not done at all?
Well, the, the implication for the Snyder Trail is that the new regulations would allow for certain public facilities and utilities to be constructed up to one foot without, with, simply with the correct engineering to show that there's no negative impact on the floodplain, so that there's no impact to the adjacent properties in particular. So that as you, you know, you add fill into a site, then you run the risk of moving the boundaries of the floodplain out to affect other properties. So the engineering is what's so significant and that's one of the reasons that the floodplain regulations are a little bit of a mismatch with the zoning ordinance, because this is really a technical document and relies strongly on the ability to provide the right, the correct floodproofing for any project. So, you know, bringing a trail out of the floodplain means it's more accessible, but you have to analyze those impacts on the adjacent properties.
Okay. In other projects of that nature, we had one recently that is someplace in process at this point in which there was going to be a child's play area that was partially in floodplain along a stream. And there was a lot of debate about whether this was appropriate or not, and eventually it was pulled from the, the application as it stood at that point. But is this saying that it would be possible then to, to build a, a small retaining wall around that, raise the level of that in the, in the floodplain area and affect your floodplain back simply because you've raised slightly an area like a play area, which I presume doesn't hit any of the other things as major records or emergency facilities or anything like that? It's just an area that if it's wet, children wouldn't be able to play on. Is that something that would impact those kinds of aspects of a development process?
Well, the one thing that FEMA's after is to minimize the man-made disturbance in the floodplain. So any development, development is defined, excuse me, has a man-made change to the floodplain. So it would have to be justified, in other words, is there an overall public benefit to a private playground? If that's the situation I think you're referring to, that would warrant, you know, making a change to the floodplain. So that's where the implication is to be, to balance the public, the public benefit against the alteration and then what the potential implications are on adjacent properties. So all of this will be brought forward through the technical analysis, the hydrology and hydrologic analysis that would accompany the floodplain permit. So that's how we get at applying our local regulations, is that any development and proposal in the floodplain is required to submit a floodplain permit with all the technical documentation that's needed to justify and to identify any potential adverse impacts.
Okay, thank you. I know my way of, just comment for the identification of my fellow planning commissioners. We had a project in the city in which we, you know, additional single-family houses were going to be built. And fill was allowed in the floodplain to raise it up so that you could build not in the floodplain. Interestingly enough, the other side of that creek just across from this had a change in the map that caused, as Mr. Rice alluded to, the corner of a house about that same time to be declared in the floodplain because the corner in, in a new hydrology study caught that. So this is something that I think is going to be a dynamic that's not going away anytime soon. The more it rains and the more it changes the topography a little bit, the more we're going to deal with this. But I think the changes you've, you've suggested here are, are a significant improvement in your ability to handle this type of situation in an appropriate way instead of making it a convoluted situation. So thank you very much for working through all the changes that you've prevented to us. I think there will be a beneficial move forward.
And if I could just add, one of the things that's, that's motivating the change to the floodplain regulations is the new mapping. So FEMA has acquired more detailed topog, topographical mapping and that is going to give us more precise information. So hopefully we could avoid situations where, you know, one change on one property inadvertently affects another with the more detailed mapping that would be adopted along with our ordinance.
That would be good. We've dealt with clomars and lomars, especially in, in the North Vax West project that was approved, I guess it's a year and a half or two years ago now that's in process of being built and, and then stream restoration projects that are brought along trying to, to help. So, thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other comments? Ms. Lockard, any comments or questions on this topic?
Nothing for me, thank you.
Okay. Okay, do you, Mr. Feather?
I may sound like I know what I'm talking about, but I'm not sure that I do. You'd mentioned that the, some of the requirements are more stringent than are required. The fact that we're this Dillon Rule state, are we, as a municipality, allowed to do that already permitted by the, by the Commonwealth?
I believe we can be more, but not less stringent than the state allows. Do I have that right? Do I have that right, bro?
Yeah, that's the concern, yeah. Just making sure we're on...
Always get mixed up.
Solid footing, but, yeah, you, you just never know what you can do, whether more or less constrained. I'm very intrigued by what Mr. Cunningham brought up with the George Snyder Trail in particular. Like, it's hard to imagine that this will not have an impact on that project. And, you know, we have a capital improvement program, which is budgeted a certain amount for this trail. It'd probably be good to know at some point what the cost implications will be. But it's a concern. It may be the right thing to do, but if I were on city council, I'd want to know what will be the benefit of these changes, recognizing there's a cost to us. Just minimizing disturbance in the floodplain, I'm not sure what tangible benefit is, but there's certainly going to be an economic impact, I would expect. But, anyway.
Mr. Harden, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I saw you shaking your head earlier when I think Mr. Cunningham, or maybe it was Mr. ...
I don't...
Mr. One of the Misters up here asked about the cost implications. I feel like you may have been suggesting that there are not any or you don't know.
No.
Don't know, okay. Thank you. Okay. Any other comments? Do you have any questions for us?
I do not.
Okay. As well? Any questions? Okay, thank you very much this evening.
You're welcome.
All right. Okay, that is the end of our work session, so we will move back to the regular meeting and move to item 10, which is the staff report. Mr. Napti?
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the planning commission. As you recall, we did not meet earlier in April, so I'm gonna rewind to late March for the review of some of the topics of the city council. At their late March meeting, the city council discussed a proposal for an assisted living facility at 10440, 10450, and 10460 Main Street. This is also known as the Bank of America property in Old Town. This application is likely only to require a special exception request, so it would not to be reviewed by the planning commission. At their April 5th meeting, the city council received their pre-application briefing on the proposed multifamily apartment at 4131 Chambers Road, also known as the Davies property. This is the project that the planning commission was briefed on on March 14. They also received a briefing for proposed car wash at 9917 Fairfax Boulevard, also known as the Esposito site. This would only require a special use permit for a drive-through, so again, no planning commission review be required. At that same meeting, they also received an update on the Camp Washington Small Area Plan from our consultant. This is the same briefing that the planning commission received on March 28th. Couple of upcoming items to be aware of for the planning commission. We don't have exact dates for these yet, but likely to happen in the next two or three meetings. We will receive a work session from staff member Eric Foreman on our next bundle of zoning amendments or amendments to the zoning ordinance. These are the more administrative items that come before you usually about twice a year. So this is a package that includes a number of items in it. At a recent city council meeting, the city council asked to receive a brief presentation on the 2022 factbook. This is something that I know the planning commissioners are all familiar with, but we thought it would be helpful to share some of the more recent changes to the factbook, some new data and some highlights. So if you're interested in that, we can schedule that in an upcoming meeting as well. And then lastly, we anticipate having a discussion with you about the fourth small area plan. Not that the project would begin immediately, but we are at the point where we need to decide where we will prioritize next. And so we'll be having a discussion with the planning commission, followed by the city council to get some direction on that. And that's all we have for the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Napti. Questions or comments from Mr. Napti on the staff report? Mr. Cunningham?
I have one. We received sharing of a project request recently about Pine Street. And what it gave was a very detailed assessment of the initial evaluation by staff of the project, but not really where the project was or what it was, if you happen to have missed it, I guess. Is that something that we can be brought up to speed on or is that long, detailed, and very good analysis of the project, what we're dealing with, that is out there without a connection?
I'm not familiar with the project on Pine Street.
I think it's Park Road.
Or is it Park Road?
Oh, Park Road.
Yeah, Park Road.
All right, I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's okay.
Staff has received, I'm not, I'm not sure what kind of information you received about it. Staff has received an application. I'm not sure the exact number of units is similar to what the previous application was. It might have been 13. And the staff has done some internal review. We do anticipate having a post-application work session with the planning commission on that one, probably not in the next two or three meetings, but likely before the August recess.
We received from Ms. Cholet, the, I think her first set of remarks to the applicant.
Okay, yes, I'm sorry, I was aware of that.
Okay.
And, and so this is, I'm not, I don't believe that the community development division has always done this, this is a new process. Well, they will be sharing their comment letters on development proposals with you. So by the time you get to a work session, you'll be more familiar with the kind of behind-the-scenes discussions that have happened and all the major issues that have come up. So hopefully that, that is helpful.
It would help to have context as to what it's related to. As they say, it was an excellent analysis, but without being able to tack it to, you know, someplace on the donkey that would make sense, it was hard to, hard to...
Okay, I apologize.
No need to apologize. We, I think we've received that before, perhaps for the Fairfax Gardens and maybe...
Some of the other projects that we're already working on, we have seen, but...
Right. Okay.
That's all.
Thank you, Mr. Cunningham. Any other additional comments for the, for Mr. Napti? Ms. Lockard?
Nothing, thank you.
Okay. I have two, two quick questions. One is on the Fairfax Presbyterian. I feel like you and I may have spoken about that. Is that coming up for a work session soon?
That is. We actually have a, a number of projects that are coming up for work sessions, but none of them are close enough that we have a fine date on.
I see.
I would anticipate that. I believe they're thinking in June sometime, certainly before the August recess for that as well.
Okay. And this is just something to, this is not like a secret or anything, but the, the BAR or the staff liaison to the BAR received something to research, to redo the facade in one of the Camp Eric Washington properties, correct?
That's correct.
Can you just tell the commission quickly about that?
The application the BAR received or the staff liaison received is for, I'm not sure how we would name the shopping center. It is one of the three shopping centers owned by Frederick R. Biltie, is one site up the hill from the main center, which includes Aldi and CVS. The building includes, it was the former pet store that moved, there's a Duron paint store, there's a fitness supply store in there. Around the backside is where the new Dogtobia facility is going in. We received an application to do what I would consider a fairly significant facelift for that shopping center, something that, that probably does indicate that, that is likely to stay there for a number of years. And the BAR, I don't think, just scheduled for them to review it yet, but that's something to be aware of, since that's certainly a site of interest in the Camp Washington Small Area Plan.
Yeah, yes. You know, I think, and this is just me looking at the shopping center when I drive by it, it looks like they're moving all of the tenants out of there. So I, I'm just sort of curious as to what is happening. I don't know if you know, but Brian Scarf is leaving too.
Yes, and we don't know, we haven't talked to the property owner about what their long-term plan is on, aside from receiving this application, so I, I'm not sure.
Okay. Okay. All right, thank you, Mr. Napti. Okay, so that's the end of the staff report, correct? Okay, thank you. We'll move to commission comments and we'll start with Ms. Lockard.
No comments this evening. Thanks for allowing me to produce this early.
Sure, you're welcome. Mr. Coleman?
The only comment I have is definitely any floodplain questions I'm going to be asking Dr. Rice, that's for sure.
All right.
Maybe, maybe my colleague here.
Mr. Rice?
Yeah, floodplain stuff is, is fun. Lots of money being spent to secure homes in floodplains and, as I mentioned, very small changes can have very big impacts. And we want to make sure that when we make recommendations that we have just tons of information. Certainly, real estate professionals are concerned about these issues and homeowners are concerned and certainly business owners. I'm looking at the FEMA documents right now and there's, you know, there are a number of changes here and it's, yeah, something the city needs to think about. Certainly, we've heard from our public works director how difficult the situation is at the property yard, which is frequently inundated. It's completely under the floodplain and it's just a very difficult circumstance. We have a lot of rainfall here and more than we need. I just got done teaching my students in a class about how arid the west is and what a difficult time they're having. And one of the experts that I was interviewing last week said, yeah, you, you have more water than you need, we have less than we need and it's, you know, inequitable. So, anyway, I think that although it probably is a little mundane and, you know, seemingly minor thing, it's not. This is actually, could be quite big and we should, I think, treat it like that. I want to just recommend that we give as much kudos and credit as we can to the factbook and certainly if there are, if the city council has changes and things that they want in the factbook, I'd love to hear about it. As I mentioned before, it's a stunning piece of work for a city of 23, 24,000 to have the technical ability to put together information that's both that detailed and that accessible is really quite remarkable. And the staff of yours that participate in that need to be congratulated. I know that that goes back quite some time. It's really valuable, at least in my estimation. It's one of the most important public documents that you produce. And I think, boy, I'd go to war if anybody said that's not useful, we should be spending less staff time on that. I'm, you know, call me up, I'll show up in a moment's notice and say, no, that's, that's actually exactly wrong. This is incredibly useful. People look at it, I use it in teaching. It's just a good piece of work and I think helps formulate decision, helps form context behind discussions. And it's just, it's great. It leaves me very confident knowing that this city has staff that can do great work like that. We don't need to hire that out. That's something I think that we do mostly in-house and it's just, it's great. So if the city council does have recommendations, I'd love to hear about them in, in the future when it's relevant. That's all.
Thank you. Mr. Feather?
Just a couple of things on the status from the Board of Architectural Review. At our April 6 meeting, we had public hearings and approved the proposal for the Popeyes on Fairfax Boulevard and also the architecture on the assisted living facility at the, let me see, the...
Lehigh.
The Lehigh, because there's another one coming later for the highway. So both of those, both of those went through and our last, last meeting was canceled and the next one is also canceled. So a little bit of hiatus in bar activity for a couple of meetings now. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Feather. Mr. Cunningham?
No comment.
Mr. F. DeGarry?
No comment, thank you.
Okay, and I don't have any comments either. Thank you very much to the staff. Thank you very much to our IT staff and will we have a meeting next time? We will, okay. I'll see you everybody on the second Monday in May. Until then, have a good two weeks. We're adjourned. We're adjourned.